Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. I would like to welcome you to our Board of County Commissioners Budget Public Hearing. This is our final public hearing and we will be voting, taking the final vote on the budget tonight. It is September 20th, 2018. I know it's not on our schedule, but I think we'll rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Stacy White.
You want an invitation as well?
Sure.
All right, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this vibrant economy and the resources that we have available for this county budget. Lord, this is people's hard-earned dollars, and I just pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders tonight and see to it that we make wise decisions as we appropriate these funds. We ask for this guidance and for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. It's important to bless our budget. Tonight, there will be two public hearings scheduled. One will be on the capital improvement program, or what we call the CIP, and the second on the fiscal year 2019 millage rates and budget. Because changes to the budget could impact the first year of the five-year CIP, it is appropriate to conclude the public hearing prior to concluding the CIP hearing. I would like to open the CIP public hearing and then entertain a motion to continue that public hearing to the conclusion of the public hearing on the budget. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner White. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on the millage rates and budget prior to the board adopting millage rates and the budget for fiscal year 2019. In a moment, the budget director will read into the record the change in the aggregate fiscal year 2019 millage rate from the aggregate rollback rate, after which he will briefly discuss the status of the budget. At that point, we will take public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will discuss any final changes to the millage or the budget. And if necessary, there will be a short recess while the impact of any final changes is calculated. Finally, state law requires certain information to be read into the record prior to the board adopting resolutions on the millage rates and the budget. And I'll now turn it over to Tom to cover the change in the aggregate rollback rate and then to cover the status of the budget.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Fesler, Management and Budget Department. The calculated change in millage represents a 6.18% increase in the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects, in part, normal inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes increased funding for transportation, statutory and contractual commitments, performance pay in union contracts, the sheriff's office, and certain other county needs. Commissioners, the budget the board will adopt tonight reflects the tentative budget approved last week, as amended by any updates and corrections. The fiscal year 19 budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating from all three major rating agencies. The budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with your strategic focus. The fiscal year 19 budget provides funding for the following. It provides funding for your accelerated county transportation plan, $17 million in new funding for constitutional officers, funding necessary to replace old equipment and technology, funding to properly maintain the county's infrastructure assets, funding to increase employee compensation, and finally continues, and in some cases increases, funding to certain nonprofit partners. And with that, I will spend just a few minutes covering a presentation that I went over last week. It's a very short PowerPoint presentation, just to give an overview of where we are in the budget process. As I just mentioned, the county continues to maintain its AAA bond rating. The millage resolution, as it stands currently, has no millage increase over the prior year. The county is maintaining its general fund reserves at 21%, which is above and consistent with your recently adopted policy on fund balance and reserves. The fiscal year 19 budget is conservative in anticipation of the potential new homestead exemption that will be voted on by the citizens in November this year. And finally, nearly 60% of every dollar of property tax revenue goes to law enforcement, fire services, or other public safety needs. Some of the challenges that we are experiencing in the budget right now are what I had just mentioned, which is the pending homestead exemption vote. We have some uncertainty there that would, if it's approved, impact our fiscal year 20 budget, which would be our next, our subsequent year's budget after the one you're adopting tonight. We also are placing heavy reliance on our general fund to support their recently adopted 10-year transportation policy. And we also are seeing that there are some transportation needs that are being identified outside of the original project list that was funded in accordance with the transportation policy that was adopted. And finally, what we're seeing are some current service deficits and future growth needs for things such as fire rescue, parks, stormwater, and affordable housing. I won't go over the next couple of slides in detail, just point out some of the highlights. This is kind of, this represents our new sources and uses of funding in the budget. So basically, our growth dollars and how they were allocated this year. As you can see, we had close to $100 million in new sources of revenue, and that being reduced by about $17 million in funding, additional funding for constitutional officers and outside agencies resulted in net new resources available to the county of about, county administration, whoops, of about $82 million. And then finally, on the uses side, we have about $55 million that were allocated to things that we consider to be mandates, contracts, and commitments. We have some needs that were identified by the county administrator from departmental budget submissions, some commissioner priorities, flagged items that you approved back on July 26th, and then we finally have some additional funding, about $4 million that's available for allocation tonight. And the next couple of slides are just kind of the detail on some of what I just described. As far as contracts and commitments, we do have a BOCC policy on reserves, to maintain reserves, so obviously, that's based on a percentage. So as we have new resources that are available, we also need to keep up proportionally with the reserve requirement in that new policy. And then as, this past year with Hurricane Irma, we were able to identify some additional needs as far as emergency preparedness, so we do have about $11 million of additional funding that's in this year's budget for some emergency preparedness. Some of the county administrator priorities, as you can see, as I described earlier, technology and equipment, public safety, some new funding for aging services, and then commissioner priorities, which included heart, and then some access improvements for Progress Village Middle School, County White Soccer Complex, operating costs, and a couple of other items there. These are the items that you approved and were included in the tentative budget that was adopted last week. These were approved in July 26th at your budget reconciliation workshop, about $5.4 million in new funding needs that were identified. And then finally, what we have tonight are some items that had been identified either last week or since last week that we have included on a new flag, what we consider Flag List. And as you can see at the top, as I had mentioned earlier, about $4 million would be available for allocation tonight. And as you can see from the Flag List here, these are the items that will be considered for inclusion of the budget tonight. And at this point, it would be appropriate to take public comment.
Okay, thank you, Tom, for your presentation. I see no questions. We will now open the public hearing. The first speaker to speak on the budget will be David Moore, followed by Troy Ippolito.
Hello, can everybody hear me? Okay, I hope you're listening.
And each speaker will have three minutes.
Thank you. I am here to oppose the funding for the Maydell Street Bridge for the following reasons. We haven't received too much information about this in our community. Can we get this turned on, please, sir? The truck traffic on non-truck route, this pic is from July of this year. Drivers ignore the signs. Our substandard roadways are not built to withstand the weight of these vehicles. Without enforcement, these regulations are just suggestions. This funding could be used to enhance our staff at the sheriff's office. A decade ago, we were short 200 deputies. Now we're short 300 deputies. The situation, Commissioners, is dire. We have a lady of the evening who works the afternoon shift most days on our street. She leaves her calling cards in her wake. Sometimes Commissioners, a ho is just a ho.
Sir, I'm going to ask that photo to be removed.
Yes, ma'am.
It's inappropriate.
And I walk by all the time. Yes, ma'am, it is inappropriate.
Thank you.
This is the conditions in my neighborhood. I apologize. We need law enforcement presence in our community. The situation is dire. I heard Mr. Merrill remark that the Timber Pond area receiving 14 inches of rain in one month is a once-in-a-hundred-year event. We call that July in Palm River. I record rainfall daily. We need regular maintenance of our drainage ditches. Here are pictures of flooding in the neighborhood from this July. I have a work order request numbers, a voicemail from Penny Lumpkin from April 2015 saying our ditches would be cleaned out. They have never been, and I've lived in Palm River for 30 years. Okay, just more pictures. I would like to bring in there some severe flooding. These are rental apartments. The water's almost out the door. Commissioner Miller, I would like to talk to you about, three years ago, I appeared before you and a majority of this commission about a rezoning. They were trying to get commercial general rezoning, and it was denied by this board, and I greatly thank the board for doing that. But it appears that they are ignoring their zoning conditions and proceeding with general commercial items on this property. So code enforcement, Mr. Spiller and his staff are on the situation, and I greatly appreciate their hard work, but I think they could use a little more support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Troy Ippolito, followed by Dolores Williams.
Good evening. As you may recall, I was here last week before this board requesting to please not fund rebuilding and replacement of the Maydell Drive Bridge in Palm River. I have returned to clarify a point and follow-up. Last week, I mentioned that in the past, when residents requested a school crossing guard at the intersection of Maydell Drive and Palm River Road for safety reasons, Hillsborough County School Board deemed it too dangerous to be manned by a guard. Commissioner Kemp, I heard a gasp from you when that statement was made, and I thank you and appreciate your concern. Commissioner Miller, you stated in your follow-up that this board have nothing to do with that. That's the school board, not us. Commissioner Miller, as a point of clarification, I brought this issue to the board's attention to emphasize a prior point, that county staff labeled Maydell Drive and Palm River Road as failing roads and too dangerous by the school board, but really not to request a crossing guard. Just wanted to clarify if there was any confusion. As further emphasis during the early morning hours of March 11th this year, a speeder traveling westbound on Palm River Road hit the power pole near Maydell Drive, and the area was without power for eight hours. Without enforcement, we have speed suggestions and not speed limits. This point is about safety, which replacement of the bridge does not address. In addition, Commissioner Miller, you stated last week that since the Maydell Drive Bridge has been closed, Palm River Road has become a disaster area. And I agree. Yet, since the bridge's closure on December 21st, 2015, aside from patching a few potholes the county has made no efforts to address or improve this disaster, as you called it. Last month, on August 21st, after making the largest private investment ever to benefit my community of $2.5 million by Lightning owner Jeff Vinnick and his wife Penny, we so greatly appreciate the Winston Park Boys and Girls Club's holding its dedication and grand opening ceremony as a result of their generosity. The Vinnicks had to drive down Palm River Road, that disaster, as we called it, in order to attend that celebration. The county should be ashamed what the Vinnicks saw during their visit to my community on Palm River Road that day, I know I am. And lastly, in closing, in 1968, what may have been a very good idea 50 years ago to build the Maydell Drive Bridge over the Palm River does not mean that that idea still holds true a half-century later. I see this as a unique opportunity to think outside the box, to improve my community by doing something different and focusing on more pressing needs, not exacerbating them. Funding $6 million for the replacement of a new bridge to service failing roads is not that opportunity, and it makes no sense. I see a vision for the future of my community of what it could be, not what it was, by using ideas from the past. As our county leaders, I would expect you to share in that vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you recognize?
Madam Chair, you know, I've heard Mr. Ippolito talk about what has not happened in Palm River Road, in Palm River, and I've heard him talk about the neglect that Palm River has had and the fact that no one knew that we want to put the money in the budget for the bridge, when we told them three years ago that was going to happen. I want to go over to the Elmo and show what's going on in Palm River. Is that okay?
Sure.
The numbers are cut off on the side, but I want to show what's happening in Palm River, okay? The bottom line, by the year 2023, we will spend $28 million in Palm River alone. $28 million. If you go down and look at Palm River Road, the paving of Palm River Road, if I can find it here, will be completed by November 2019, $1.2 million, and that will include sidewalks. That will include sidewalks. There also talks about Lexington Park drainage, all those totals. The Claremont School improvements, the bridge, which we told you three years ago, we were going through, rebuild that bridge, 50th Street and Palm River Intersection Improvement, $1.8 million. Go back up to Palm River Utility Expansion. Before I was elected, before I got sworn in, Palm River had me in a meeting, I wasn't even a county commissioner, talking about the water that they did not have, because the city of Tampa was supposed to annex that area and didn't do it. We have put $13 million to bring you decent drinking water in Palm River. So to sit here and say nothing's been done in Palm River is not true. $28 million by 2023 we spent in Palm River. You knew the bridge was going to be replaced. We told you that three years ago. When the bridge was out, we said we're going to be replacing that bridge, and it was going to cost us $6 million. It took some time to get there because of the things we had to go through specifically with, I think, the Armored Corps of Engineers and those type of things, but that's been out there. So to say nothing's been done in Palm River and nothing's being done in Palm River, $28 million in Palm River area just alone. So Palm River Road will be taken care of. We worked very hard out in Palm River. We worked very hard to get, you talk about sheriffs, I met with a new sheriff yesterday. We don't have 300 vacancies, it's 127. His commitment is to complete all of those, fill them, and Palm River, get new sheriffs out there. So sit here and say nothing's being done, talk to me first before you come in and say that, because that's a low blow to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dolores Williams, followed by Terri Payne.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. My name, as you say, is Dolores Williams. I have resided in Palm River Village for the past 46 years. I am a resident of the Palm River Village and entire area. The closing of that bridge has really made it very inconvenient for the residents of that area. And I'm speaking of the resident in Palm River Village. There is over 200 or 300 homes and residents who have been affected by the closing of that bridge. The bridge needs to be reopened. In order for us to get to our home in Palm River Village, we have to go at least two and a half miles out of our way. If I'm coming Orient Road, I have two options. When I get to Adamo Drive, I either have to turn right to go down to 41, over to Palm River Road, and back up to Palm River Village. The other option, if I want to go left, I have to go up to 78th Street. Each way, I'm bypassing my home. With the bridge being open, I can exit off of Orient Road right close to the bridge to go home, not just to me, but these other residents of that area. That bridge being closed have affected people from Adamo Drive to the Causeway. It was promised to be reopened by 2021, and that's what we are expecting out of our Commissioners, for you to stand behind your word. There isn't any reason why, there's signs up there saying no trucks, police if necessary. It's not going to bring in any crime or anything else. There's crime in every neighborhood. City of Tampa is built on bridges all over the place. You got to cross the bridge in Tampa to get pretty much anywhere. So the fact that you're replacing that little bridge, that means so much to the residents of that area, is unthinkable. And I'm holding the Commissioners to their promise that 2021, that bridge will be replaced and open. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Terri Payne, followed by David Drew.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. Thank you for the time, and I want to thank you all for the job you're doing. Appreciate you all very much. I know it was difficult. I run a small business around the 5600 block of Causeway, and around four years ago, when that bridge closed down, it got real inconvenient for me and my drivers. So I went down there to check it all out, and I noticed that the traffic turning around and the kids coming out of school was extremely dense. I don't know the answer, but it's not safe down there right now, the way it's going, and I don't think it's going to be safe to open that bridge the way it is. There's a lot of kids that run out in that road, there's a lot of people that are walking around with that bridge being open and the big trucks that run through there, and I was one of the companies that ran big trucks through there. We won't be doing that anymore. But it is a safety concern of mine, and I just felt compelled to come and talk to you about it. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for coming. David Drew, followed by Bernice Powell Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Is this on? Can you hear me? I want to talk about the Maydell Bridge. You got it? I want to talk about the Maydell Bridge. You can see what I'm showing here? Okay, here we go. What you have here is you have 41, you have 78th Street. These are both four-lane roads. You have Maydell that is a cross-through road here. This is a two-lane road. I understand that there's federal funding behind this to do the Sun Trail. I don't agree with the whole traffic safety deal with opening that back up. That's a big, this traffic pattern works now. I came in here three weeks ago, I asked, did we run the traffic counts? I still haven't heard that answer back. I ask again, has anybody ran the traffic counts to see if the traffic pattern works on 41 and 78th Street? I came in here last week, brought up the pictures. You can see the unpaved road there. I see that that's being taken care of. I appreciate that. We do appreciate that. I see on your budget where there's going to be future sidewalk. I appreciate that. But it comes down to a whole safety. What you have here is you have a neighborhood community right now. You're going to open up a expressway, speedway through there through traffic, and at the end of the day, it is a unsafe scenario. I'm sorry that there's inconvenience here or there for people, but at the end of the day, it's a safety deal. You're going to take and open up a expressway through a residential area. I really disagree with that. I think we need to look at that and reevaluate that. We can spend that $6 million other places. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's David Drew.
Yes. Bernice Powell Jackson, followed by Sean Wilson.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Bernice Powell Jackson. I'm the pastor of First United Church of Tampa, and I'm the vice president of Hope. And we're here once again, and we keep returning because everyone deserves a decent home. Over these many months and really years, we've shared many stories of hard-working families struggling every day because of our county's lack of affordable housing. Thousands of families survive by doubling up in homes or living in unsafe and crowded conditions, and some are forced to move frequently. We share stories of the struggles of small business owners because of the lack of affordable housing for their workers. Those of you who were at our Nehemiah Action in April of 1,300 people heard the testimony of Superintendent Akins that the lack of affordable housing has a very negative impact on our children's success in school. We have shared these stories to expose the grave problem that our county and its residents face, which we know is only getting worse. Your own county plans and staff agree that there is a vast problem, for data continues to show that at least 105,000 families pay over 50% of their income on housing, and 3/4 of these families have low incomes. Public housing and Section 8 voucher waiting lists are overflowing. There just is not enough housing out there for families with low incomes. We've also kept proposing a solution. For a community of our size and the severe housing problem that exists, we've asked you to invest $10 million annually in a housing fund to create and rehab decent housing affordable for working families and seniors with low incomes where the need is greatest, and to clearly define how the funds will be used and monitored. This is the minimum of what is needed to tackle our county's housing problem. We understand that politics is the art of compromise, and that the Board of County Commissioners has difficult budget decisions to make. We also know housing is a basic human right gravely impacting families and children. So tonight, we ask you to approve at least the $5 to $6 million being discussed, and to disperse the funds so that the development of affordable housing for families with low incomes happens this coming year. Yet, we also want to be clear. We see this as a good down payment, for we all know that this is not enough to solve this huge problem. Only with dedicated, ongoing stream of at least $10 million annually can affordable housing developers and rehabbers make the long-term plans needed to increase housing that's affordable. Only with that commitment can we make this county the showcase that we can be for this state. So please see this as a long-term commitment.
Thank you.
And know that we will be back.
Thank you. Sean Wilson, followed by Jerry Courtrite.
Good evening. Good morning. Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Chair. I rise today to applaud the Commission. It looks like you're going to allocate five, or maybe a little bit more, million dollars for affordable housing. That's new money that the county didn't put into affordable housing before, and that is nothing short of revolutionary. It's great, and it's, I'm here to, also to assure the Commission and staff and the public that the county has a great system for delivering affordable housing. And I was so honored to find that one of the communities, one of the communities that my company developed, called Silver Lakes, is featured on page 13 of the Citizens' budget. That's a 72-unit community where this board approved $975,000 of ship funding. We leverage that with low-income housing tax credits and private capital. We always bring private capital to the table, and that's the kind of productivity that you're going to see with this new $5 million or more, and really looking forward to getting some of these projects that are already in the pipeline in front of staff, according to the proper procedures, and delivering something really great for the citizens. So thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
Sean Wilson, S-H-A-W-N-W-I-L-S-O-N.
We have Jerry Courtright, followed by Ed Cronin.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jerry, or Jay, Courtright, a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Tampa, a member congregation of Hope. What rent can a worker afford? Assume the best case, forty hours of work each week at fifteen dollars an hour for fifty-two weeks of the year. Total gross income, thirty-one thousand, two-hundred dollars, or twenty-six hundred dollars a month. A landlord wants the tenant's rent not to exceed one-third monthly income, or eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars in this scenario. Tampa has very few rentals at eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars a month, even suitable for one person. And the minimum wage in Florida is eight dollars and twenty-five cents, a little over half the fifteen-dollar hourly wage I proposed in this scenario. So an employee working full-time for the Florida wage, minimum wage, could afford only about four-hundred-and-thirty dollars a month. So how can the Hillsborough County Commissioners help? How can you, as Commissioners, assure local businesses that there's a workforce available to fill the job those businesses need to staff? You probably can't increase the wages paid even to fifteen dollars an hour. You're having difficult times subsidizing public transportation, much less making it free for people. The most important thing you could do is provide money to affordable housing developers to build, as well as rehabilitate and renovate, existing housing throughout the county wherever there is demand. Housing close to jobs, housing close to public transportation, housing close to schools. Build housing, and people will live in it. This is not charity. It's not a handout to poor people. It's not welfare. It's not even altruism. It's self-interest. It's job creation. Dispersing funds to developers creates jobs, many of the jobs paying more than fifteen dollars an hour. This is the county funding the prosperity and well-being of Hillsborough County. It's money invested in the improved appearance of the county while also providing safe, affordable housing that enhances family life and stimulates the rehabilitation of neighborhoods. Please approve at least five to six million dollars in affordable housing in next year's budget, and make sure it is used wisely to build and rehabilitate housing in our county affordable for families with low income. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Cronin, followed by Ricky McKinney.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ed Cronin, and I definitely want to thank you for this investment of five or more million dollars in funds into your citizens. And just like you've been, this budget also includes investment for infrastructure, for utilities, for roads, for transit. This too is an investment. There's a lot of stats that would support that. You get much more return for your investment. It's not just a charity. It's not a one-way thing. But one of the things I wanted to read is some of the things that happen with the children of this community. Children like a stable home are vulnerable to poverty, hunger. They have to repeat grades, more likely end up in the criminal justice system. These are all things that cost the community, not just in terms of services they have to provide, but also in terms of lost jobs, lost wages, people who could have a brilliant future if they were given the opportunity, but simply don't have that opportunity because they don't have a home, a roof over their head. And so please, you're considering this. Five million is a great start, but please consider more. Every dollar that you invest is an investment in the community with significant rewards for this community in terms of productive lives in the future that will contribute to this society and help us to be strong and diverse.
Thank you very much. Ricky McKinney, followed by David Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Ricky McKinney. I'm a member of Organized Florida Healthcare Committee, and we're a member-based community and organization for low-to-moderate-income residents working for social, racial, and economic justice. And we do our work through committees, and we're healthcare, criminal justice, climate justice, and affordable housing. And our healthcare minute is working to expand the healthcare bill, and I'm just here to ask for more funding for healthcare and low-income housing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming. David Williams, and then followed by Marissa Borden.
Good afternoon, members of the board. David Williams, sorry for my unpreparedness. I just found out about this about a half hour ago and raced across. I own Hillsborough County Historic Landmark via Madell. With the help of this board, we were able to get that home historically preserved, so I thank you for that. I also like to thank Mr. Miller for bringing us drink and water. Thank you. I appreciate that. I reside directly on Madell Drive, and I'm here to speak about the bridge. I understand it might be inconvenient for some people to get in, get out, but for us living there, the safety aspect is the most concerned. And I really don't care if you guys reopen the bridge or not, it's all about the traffic calming. We have semis up and down all day, every day. Honestly, my kids aren't allowed to go in the front yard. We've built a driveway to the back of that house so that we load and unload in the back because it's not safe. My wife will not even check the mail because it's so unsafe. In fact, I would love for you guys to come over and check the mail one time. You just have to walk across, because where we are, Madell is only allowed to have mailboxes on the opposite side of the road. So we have, it's literally a sprint to get across, and we've petitioned the Postmaster General, and we're denied on that. But it's dangerous. We have to wait till nine, ten o'clock at night to go check the mail because you can't do it during normal business hours. I can't take my kids out. You know, all of that stuff, it all just comes back down to if we can get it under control. We've put speed tables, which are a visual deterrent, not an actual physical deterrent on, and that hasn't done anything. There's a lot better ways. We could spend money in Palm River. He brought us water. We'd love drainage, sewer. I mean, I know all those things are major tasks. Could I share a video with you guys? I don't know if I can put it on the Elmo.
We have to see the videos at least twenty-four hours before.
Okay. Can I put a picture up?
You can put a picture up.
Okay, perfect. This picture was taken on June twenty-fourth at the corner of Madell and Causeway at about
Okay, there is a microphone. Yes.
Perfect. If you guys can see those pictures, these are motorcycle guys lining up to race down Causeway Boulevard. So what happens, you can see the silver car. You have to go around them to get through, and they'll actually run, let's see, that's another cute one right there. So this is what's really going on in Palm River. Now, this establishment operates on the corner of Palm River and Madell. They have a package license to serve alcohol. If you could zoom in on the picture, you can see that it's blatant drinking out front. You know, they hold the traffic-
Thank you, sir.
...run flaggers. It's really crazy.
Three minutes. I'm sure Commissioner Miller will get law enforcement involved.
Police officers. We have none. We have none.
Well, we'll definitely get, Commissioner Miller.
When you call, when you call on them, you know what they say? The officers cannot respond only to active domestic.
If there's street racing, they can respond.
Mr. Williams.
Please, can I have you speak with the deputy sheriff?
Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, have you ever called my office?
Yes.
About the racing? You call about that?
Absolutely. All of these pictures have been emailed to your office.
I had a meeting with the new sheriff yesterday. He's a hundred-and-twenty-three officers short.
I know.
He's not turning that money back into us anymore. He's going to hire those hundred-and-twenty-three. I talked to him about Palm River. He told me yesterday, he's going to make sure that Palm River will get the officers his need. Once he gets them in there, he's going to let me know as fast. He just graduated class, I think, at fifteen. He's got classes coming out as fast as he possibly can. They will be there.
That's what we need. It's like the Wild West.
They will be there. I've never denied you guys. At any time you ask me for something, I've worked it out for you. They'll be there.
Please. The bar's three years now. Three years, operating under the incorrect license.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. Did you want to speak to him? Oh, after you're done. Okay. You want to push your button again. Thank you. Marissa Borden.
Hi, good evening. Thank you again. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here again. I know I was here last weekend. And I don't want to reiterate a lot of things that we've already discussed. I just want to find a solution at this point. I don't really care how we've gotten to where we've gotten, but how can we do what the actual residents want? And I know that I'd requested, like, where were the requests coming from? Who wanted the bridge built? And I confirmed with the office that there are no documented requests of people wanting or requesting the bridge to be reopened. There are many documented requests of residents that don't want the bridge open. And I know there's a long laundry list of things that need to be replaced in Palm River. And I know, Mr. Miller, you made a statement last meeting that Madell Drive is a mess. I agree with you. And I say that not from a distance. I say that because I'm living in the mess. It's right in front of my front door, so I understand that. But I just, I really do think that we need to approach the issues that this community needs, based on what the residents need, and how to improve us as a whole, as a neighborhood. I don't see where the need for this bridge, who is asking for this bridge? I keep asking that question because I really genuinely want a response. And one of my other questions are, who benefits off of this bridge, except for the folks collecting the checks for building the bridge? So if there are no documented requests of folks asking for the bridge to be rebuilt, and I apologize, I missed your presentation at the beginning that showed all the work that's being done, and I will go back and check that out and educate myself. So I apologize that I missed that part. But I'm at a loss at this point, and I don't know where to move forward. We come here, week after week, and we discuss our concerns and what's going on. So where do we move from here? What's the next step? Like, me as a resident, me as a person who lives there and is electing somebody to represent the neighborhood, where do I move from here? What's, where do I go? It's a question, I guess, Mr. Miller. You help me. Where can I go from here? Like, what's my next step? Because if there's nobody asking for the bridge, and it is obviously everybody a concern, what do we do next?
Yes, you can respond.
Ma'am, as I told you last week, up until a month ago, I had not heard of anyone not wanting the bridge reopened. All that I've heard were people wanted it open. That's all I heard. And then a month ago, I got a phone call from somebody from you, an email, saying that they want the bridge open. I've had six people, six, that came to me saying, please do not open Madell Bridge. The gentleman there makes seven, that I've heard. All the others I've heard wanted the bridge reopened. Today, I got three emails from people saying, please reopen Madell Bridge. I can read them to you if you want me to.
So today, you received them?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No, no, you know, listen to what I say.
I reached out to the office and asked for documented documentation on requests that had came in, and there was none.
Mr. Lyons is here. I asked his staff a couple of weeks ago, how many requests they had for not opening up the bridge. Mr. Lyons, I think your staff told me zero. Zero. That's the gentleman that's-
Zero for what?
Zero for those people who did not want the bridge reopened. I called his office and asked, please tell me how many calls you've gotten for people that didn't want the bridge open. None. None. A month ago, I received my first email from someone not wanting the bridge open. Six people, that's all I heard from. Six.
So that leads me to my other question, communication. I have personally not heard anything, none of my neighbors have heard anything of the plans that are proposed here. How does that work? Because I'm new to all of this process, so I want to understand and educate myself and help my neighbors educate themselves on, how do we get informed? So how do we find out? Who tells us? Who communicates to us?
I think the best thing to do might be to have her talk with John Lyons over there.
John Lyons, raise your hand. Raise your hand. That's Mr. Lyons.
And he will explain the whole process to you.
So then, will he help me find out next steps at this point?
He will.
He will tell you the next steps that are going to happen. And then I would, after, if you still have further questions, I would contact Commissioner Miller's office.
I did initially, so that's why I'm here, and that's why I've kind of reached out around.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, he's over there, and hopefully he'll give you all the information you need.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker I had. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board regarding the fiscal year nineteen budget? Okay, we'll now close public comment. Thank you. Seeing none, it's now appropriate for the board to discuss any potential millage. To move to close? Well, we usually just close the public hearing. We, okay, well, we'll move. Okay, let's vote. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Now it's appropriate for the board to discuss any potential millage or other changes to the budget. And Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to, first of all, thank everyone who came down tonight, and I think this board heard you, and there can be follow-up, I think. I also had not heard anything about the Madell Bridge till recently, either way, actually. Well, actually, I had heard it was on a plan, but I hadn't heard about the community. And I think sometimes that communities are sometimes the last to know about some things, and I mean, I think it's obvious that we need to have more engagement and discussion about this. So I think that will be coming, I would believe. I wanted to talk also about, you all have received, the other commissioners here, received a report comparing Hillsborough County funding for transit to other large urban counties in Florida. And I wanted to put up an image of a chart from that full report. This compares per capita funding for transit in the seven largest cities, or seven largest counties in the state of Florida.
Commissioner Kemp, are you, is this the only sheet? Because we, I know we've all seen it, and I just, we're not doing presentations.
Right. So this is the only sheet, yes.
Okay.
And if you can just see, I'd just like to point out, and this doesn't include the taxes that they might have, sales tax, gas tax, all this, it changes this incredibly. But this is the county contribution of each of the seven largest counties, and we're second. Orange actually has big money that comes in from Disney and from the state, which we don't have, excuse me. But you can see where the second per capita, second to last. And the only reason we're not last is because of, thank you, the two-point-four million that this board put in last year and is continuing. If we hadn't done that, we would be dead last of the seven counties in our county contribution. And again, this doesn't count a lot of other things like state and sales tax and gas tax. As you can see, too, Pinellas, right across the bay, per capita for us is thirty-eight-six or eighty-six cents. Pinellas is about seventeen dollars more than us per capita for their transit system, and they have one-third of the coverage area. So I just wanted to bring that forward and let you all know. Last year, based on my flagged request, it's okay, we can take that down. I just really wanted to highlight that. Two-point-four million for Heart in transit operations was included, as I said. And consistent with that two-point-four million in the recommended budget this year, that made us not be the absolute last of any county contribution in the state of Florida. In an attempt to bring Hillsborough County a little closer to other large Florida counties, I'd asked for an additional two-point-six million this year. However, the board subjected that request to three conditions. That Heart expedite a national search for a permanent executive director, that a permanent executive director complete a fiscal operating plan, and a required contribution from the city of Tampa, even though our countywide funds come approximately forty percent from the city of Tampa already. At our last meeting, I'd asked for the conditions to be removed. I don't believe that this board should be applying those kinds of conditions to Heart. The Heart Board decided at its last meeting that it is in the agency's best interest to wait to advertise for a CEO in January, which would delay a new director and the operating plan. As we all know, the city of Tampa has budget problems, and obtaining matching funds would be difficult. They have continued their budget hearing now until next week, and it doesn't seem to be moving in a direction that would favor this. Effectively, these conditions that were applied make a poison pill on this transit funding. And at the last public hearing meeting, I got the message that there is not support for- that there is not support for removing these conditions. And that was very disappointing. But moving forward from that, I realized that there is limited support to further fund transit and move us up on this. And I'd like to make sure that the $2.6 million that I asked to put to transit is instead put to good use now. I want to recognize and commend HOPE for their persistence in raising awareness about the critical need for affordable housing. It's worth noting that affordable housing is not necessarily very affordable if it requires, as you all have bared testimony to so many times, low-income residents to also have the cost of purchasing, maintaining, and insuring a vehicle. That having been said, however, I look forward to working with HOPE and others to build affordable housing that connects our residents to transit. An article in this year's Tampa Bay Business Journal, also on ABC News, reports that rents in Tampa Bay are increasing faster than the national average by a long shot. In fact, 5.2% up in Tampa, 5.6% up in Brandon. In light of that crisis, I think it's important that we do all we can to fund our multifamily rental housing at this time. And therefore, I'd like to make a motion instead to move this $2.6 million now set aside for Heart with conditions that this board attached, that it instead be redirected and a priority given for this money to multifamily housing. I know that we're soon going to have a workshop where we'll discuss affordable housing projects and how we move forward with affordable housing funds. But I'd like to address and shift that money as my request at this time.
So, okay. Okay. I know people are in the queue to discuss other items, but I think we need to discuss this motion. Commissioner Kemp has made a motion. And can you restate it just for clarity?
Mm-hmm.
And it was seconded by Commissioner Miller.
Right.
For discussion.
I want to move that the $2.6 million that's now set aside from Heart with conditions that we've attached instead be rededicated to affordable housing with a priority for multifamily housing. We're going to have our workshop, so at that time, we can discuss how, you know, the specifics about it. But basically, that we instead move that $2.6 million into the affordable housing so that we can move that forward and take a jump at least this year.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just for correction.
Yeah, it's 2.1 million. It's 2.1.
Okay, I'll correct, 2.1 million then.
Yeah, that was, thank you for, okay, there's a lot of discussion on this motion. I know Commissioner White, you were in the queue, but I think it was, is it for this? Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm not going to make a substitute motion or anything at this time. I'd like to hear some board discussions so that I understand the will of the board. You know, I think, I think we've really answered at least the initial call here for more robust funding of affordable housing. If we're going to take that 2.1 million off the table for Heart, I'd like to see it, you know, although it's not going to be a panacea by any stretch of the imagination, I'd like to see it rolled into next year's budget to offset any potential impacts of the additional homestead exemption. Again, I know that's, as I understand the numbers, you know, not even 10% of what we're going to be facing. But, you know, nevertheless, it's, you know, 8 or 10% that we wouldn't have otherwise. So, you know, I would be in favor of that, but I'll listen to the discussion and see what the will of the board is.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan-Botham, you're recognized.
And my feeling that the money has been proposed short of $100,000 through the flagged item that Commissioner Crist has on the table here for this evening. And I think we've covered that. And I feel that the money is better used at this point, not knowing what's going to happen in November with the homestead exemption, that we be cautious, be very cautious with how we address any downfalls we have. And it's easy enough to come back to that with a budget amendment once we know what happens in November with the homestead exemption.
Good points.
But again, I feel that this was covered already with Commissioner Crist's proposal.
Okay, and also, we'll know what projects are coming into, in the pike. Okay, Commissioner Crist, you're recognized.
First, a question of Commissioner Kemp. So in essence, what you're asking is, the money that you've worked so hard to put aside to cover those shortfalls in rides up in Wy Mama, you would be giving those up?
No. No, that is outside of this. I requested this board fund 2.1 million, apparently, to add in operating costs so that, again, you know, you saw how desperately our transit needs are. But conditions were attached, I think that would make that never happen at any rate. We do have the money this year that we can do this injection in our affordable housing program. And I think it would be wise to do this. This isn't a continuing, this is a year to do this.
You want to do this in addition to the 2 million I've got here now?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'm with you. I love it.
Mm-hmm.
Let's do it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you. I second that motion for a question from Commissioner Kemp, and she answered my question. And I'm glad to see her do what she's doing because one of the things I had problems with besides the attachments that was put on her original 2.1 million dollars, the mere fact is that if we give that money to Heart, and Heart puts that money into, say, bus routes, that's non-recurring money going to a recurring hole. And when you look at non-recurring money going to a recurring hole next year, they put those routes out there, and next year, we decide, because of whatever reason we don't do that, those routes that were much needed by the public that Heart put in place now must be cut. So that hole gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Now she's shifted it over to the much-needed area of affordable housing. And there are no attachments to that, I take it, right? There's not going to be anything about a mayor being someone, something else, or we have to hire exec. I'm joking, just joking, come on. She's made a genuine, good move to put into affordable housing. I understand the concerns about the homestead exemption. I've had those concerns also. But $2.1 million toward the homestead exemption, if that passes, is going to be a drop in the bucket. This is putting people with a house, a place they can live, a place they could feel comfortable in. And we've already been said before that Hillsborough County has some of the highest rental properties in really the state of Florida. So let's not sit here and say, well, let's roll it over to next year's budget because of the mere fact that homestead exemption may pass. It's not going to do much if it passes anyway. This would do something for people that need it the most. And that's the people that need homes, that need a place to stay. So let's forget about the fact of the matter, we're going to be conservative and put it in the budget for next year. Let's put it someplace where the public needs it, the people need it. People depend on us, and that's into affordable housing. So I'm going to support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Commissioners White and Hagan-Botham in that I think it would be prudent for us to not spend these dollars and keep them to either help us balance next year's budget or perhaps keep them in advance for affordable housing in next year's budget. Perhaps that's the way we could craft these dollars. But I'm not going to support the motion on the floor as it's currently listed.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan-Botham, you're recognized.
And maybe I misunderstood it. Commissioner Kemp misspoke when she said that your colleagues here don't have an interest in funding Heart because that's not the case with this commissioner. And I just want to make sure you understand that. Just a matter of having spent 12 years here on the board and having an overall view of the budget and trying to be conservative, I would like to see some language in there. If you want my support, that would involve an amendment, a budget amendment after the election so we can, the board at that point can have further discussion as to putting that money into affordable housing. So if you want my support, I'd like to see some type of modification to do a budget amendment with this money, keep it set aside, and see what we can do from there.
So are you, like, mentioning pretty much what Commissioner Hagan said to keep it? So are you making a substitute motion?
I'll let the maker of the motion do it.
Or a motion to amend?
I can do that, but it's just a courtesy. I was going to let Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized to react.
I'm sorry, I just, so you would hold this aside, but we would reconsider this after November?
We've done this time, you know, before, many times.
I guess I'm not familiar with it, but this was already in the budget now for 2.1 million for, and I appreciate your comments, by the way, about Heart. But I am disappointed with our very low, you know, our continued low funding, our crisis funding, I would think, for Heart, and I appreciate that. But as far as this, it is already set aside in the budget. It's not even, you know, it's already been calculated in what we have. Plus, we have the $4 million surplus that's there. So, you know, I just would hope that we could move it forward. We will have the money this year, and it is just a one-time expenditure. And I appreciate your concerns, Commissioner Hagan-Botham. But I would like to at least try to, I think, do this injection this year. It is, we're, you know, also with affordable housing, I think, in a terrible crisis and spot. I was surprised when I started reading to learn that other places, rents were actually stabilizing and dropping, in New York City, for instance, amazing. And I think people are really, really suffering. And so this, I think, would be a good one-time shot in the arm. And again, it's a one-time thing, and we can reassess what we have next year. But this has already been calculated in our budget now.
At 2.1 or 2.2?
At 2.1, and I turned, I put it back at 2.1.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hagan-Botham, do you have further comments?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
I don't know if my comments are on the same page as Commissioner Hagan-Botham's or not, but what I was thinking, I'm not going to support setting aside the additional 2 million in this year's budget. But I was thinking that perhaps it would make sense to keep those monies in advance for next year's budget to be used for affordable housing, if that makes sense. So we're not setting it aside simply to see how we would use it next year, depending upon the homestead exemption and other needs, but that we would keep it in advance, that it would be targeted for affordable housing, but in next year's, the following year's budget. So I'm going to make that amendment, and we'll see if it goes anywhere.
You have an amendment to, okay, restate your amendment?
Something that would keep the 2.1 million in advance to be used in fiscal year '20's budget for affordable housing.
Okay, so we have amendment on the floor and by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Hagan-Botham. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Okay, but you're in the queue, but that's for, okay.
I'll come out of the queue. That solves my problems.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote on the amendment.
I'm voting on his amendment.
On Hagan, Commissioner Hagan's amendment.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Crist, Kemp, and Miller voted no.
Okay. So we are now on the motion as amended. Is there further comment? The motion as amended. So the motion as amended includes Commissioner Hagan's. We will hold the 2.1 million for next year's budget for affordable housing. I, I mean, you vote no if you don't want to vote for the amendment, for the motion as amended. Here's my issue, and I have been quiet. Commissioner Miller, at the last public hearing, you made a motion, though we weren't to make motions at the last, meaning that 2 million would go to the children's services and 2 would go to affordable housing. Because the flag list got increased, we are now down to 1.5 million. And I know we will be bringing to this board the redesign of children's services very shortly because of new federal laws that are coming down that are making us change the way we deliver services. So we have a critical redesign, and I need to get that 1.5 million back up to 2 million. So I'm okay with the amendment, but I would like, I could pass the gavel and make an amendment to the motion as amended to, or another amendment, I guess it would be, to make it for affordable housing and children's services, to hold the money till next year's budget. But it would not just be for affordable housing. It would include also money for children's services.
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
You're in charge. Commissioner Hagan-Botham is in the queue first.
Commissioner Hagan-Botham, you're next in the queue.
And I would prefer to vote on it as it's been amended by Commissioner Hagan, with the greatest respect, Commissioner Merman, because it gives affordable housing a $2.1 million jump start, which we didn't have at the beginning of this cycle. I hope that we can find, Commissioner Kemp talked about the many urgent needs, children's services, our law enforcement, our other first responders, parks and rec, they're many, many critical. But this does put affordable housing well ahead of where we were with affordable housing last year.
Well, I mean, the lion's share, 75% of the money would still go to affordable housing. So, okay. Next speaker is Commissioner White.
Commissioner White.
So that's my question, Commissioner Merman. So you want a percentage breakdown tied to this? So if I hear you right, you're asking that, like, 1.6 million would go to affordable housing and $500,000 would go to children's services?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. My second would stand in that case.
No.
All right, I'm chairing, but I'm the next in the queue. I've got a question.
Your microphone's off. Microphone.
This is getting complicated, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands. We just amended a motion. We're on the amended motion that moves this money to next year.
Right.
If this motion is shot down by the majority of no votes, what happens to the money?
At that point, I think it still remains as it's currently in place for Heart with the conditions. So we'd be back to status quo, the 2.1's in the budget for Heart with the conditions if the motion fails.
Okay.
Okay, but I have, we're now on my amendment.
Now, we're on the Merman amendment.
To the amended motion.
To the amended motion. Is there anyone else left in the queue?
Commissioner Hagan.
I'm just going to say that I'm going to support Commissioner Merman's amendment.
And then Commissioner Hagan-Botham.
And I didn't hear it, 75 to 25, and I find that I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay, anyone else in here? No one else?
Ready to vote.
Clerk will open the board for a vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Miller, Kemp, and Crist voted no.
Okay, we are now on the amended motion. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized. We're on the amended motion. Is there any further comment or discussion? Okay, everyone record your votes.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Miller voted no.
Okay.
Okay.
So Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
I have a question of Mr. Fessler. How much do we have in unallocated funds at this point? It was $4 million, what is it now?
Commissioner, it would still be.
Why don't you put that slide up there, just so everyone's got it in front of them? What?
So, Commissioners, at this point, it would still be the 4.025 million.
So, we still have 4.025 million unallocated?
No, I don't think that's his question. You're asking after the motion.
No, no, no. That, the motion that just passed was dealing with the monies that was allocated to Hart.
That's correct. So, that's prior to this slide.
Right. So, I'm asking now, how much, what are the funds we have unallocated at this particular point in time?
4.025 million.
That's all of it with the flag list and everything, we have 4.025.
That's prior to considering the items below the 4.025 on this slide.
Okay. So, last week, I brought up the fact that we had 4.025 unallocated funds. We still have 4.20, 4.25 million unallocated funds. Am I correct?
4.025, yes.
Yeah, I think, that's why I was, so, the slide, let's look at the slide. So, we have 4.025 with then 2 million additional going to affordable housing, and actually now with the motion, it's 2 million going to foster care. And then we have all the flagged items, so we really only have 125,000 left.
Wait, I have to ask. I thought that was 2.1 million that was in there is going to the 500 for foster care and the 1.6 for affordable housing for next year.
That was, that, I'm confused because I thought that was the money that dealt with Hart, not the money that was unallocated.
That's correct.
Exactly.
So, am I right?
That was related to the Hart funds that were approved on July 26th.
So, what monies do we have unallocated? How much do we have unallocated funds?
None.
4.025 million.
4.025 million. Am I correct?
I think, can we, should we take a quick break while you all work this out? Can I get a motion to recess for five minutes while they work this out and answer Commissioner Miller's question?
I still have the floor, right?
You do? Absolutely. I'll come right back to you. Okay, all, please record your vote, though, for the recess.
Excuse me, Commissioner Crist. Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Thank you. We will now, Board of County Commissioners, and Commissioner Miller, you have the floor. Would you like staff to explain?
Well, they can explain, or I can explain. I think they can go ahead and explain it, but where we are.
No, we're ready to make you the budget director, so you can explain.
I'm retiring in two years, man. You're going to keep me.
Honorary budget director. You want to put that back up the slide?
Go ahead, so we can clarify everything here.
So, Commissioners, maybe if I could put up, maybe I'll put up, let me go back and put up the other presentation, because I've got both slides on that one. Maybe go from the beginning.
Well, let me do this. The bottom line is that 4.2, 4.1 million dollars we had, if you look at what we have, the two, if we mentioned last week, we would take 2 million and get, put it in affordable housing, which would bring that to 5 million, and 1.5 million going to the reserves for foster care. So, that takes care of that unallocated 4 million dollars. The bottom line is unapproved flagged monies we have left over is 125,000. So, affordable housing gets 5 million. If we approve that tonight, affordable housing gets 5 million, and reserves for foster care gets 1 million. Did I explain that right? Staff?
Mr. Merrill?
That's correct, Commissioner, so, based on what's been voted on tonight, so maybe if I can go back just one second. Whoops. This is the approved flag list that you, this is the flag list that you voted on on July 26th. So, the very top item, the 2.1 million, is the item that you just addressed with your vote. And the vote was to, of that 2.1 million, reallocate that from Hart, 500,000 would be put in abeyance for consideration next year, go into next year's budget for children's services, and 1.6 million would go towards affordable housing in next year's budget. So, that basically reallocates the funding in the vote that was taken on July 26th. Subsequent to that, the funding that was left and still available after that point is the 4 million that you see at the top of this slide. So, everything below the 4 million on the top of this slide has yet to be voted on tonight.
Right, that's correct. We still have to vote on this flag list.
Right, that's correct.
But we still have 125,000 to spend, right?
Correct. If you approve everything else on the list, on this new flag list, then you will still have 125,000 left.
So, we'll give 100...
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
We have 5 million in there for right now for affordable housing?
Yes.
I make a motion, we add that 125,000 for affordable housing also?
There you go. If I could second, I would. So, okay. So, we have a motion and a second to add the 125,000 remaining unallocated funds to the 2 million for affordable housing in the allocation for this year's budget. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I do have people in the queue. Do you want to speak to the motion? Commissioner Kemp?
No, you can, so... Is the motion your motion now that we're, are you looking for a second for what you just did?
No, he got a second.
I got a second.
Okay. And so, that is, that's an amendment to the motion?
No, 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 no. We've already passed mine. This is, on the new flag list, there's 125,000 unallocated, and we're going to spend it on affordable housing. Commissioner White, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Just want to be clear that, for the record, that by approving that, you have approved the flag list. So, you actually haven't taken a vote on the flag list.
We have not. That's why I was going to do next.
Probably should, just to be clear.
We are, yeah.
But as a result of that, the 125 goes to...
That was the next thing on the agenda. So, we have motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Hagan-Botham and Miller to approve the flag list, and we do have people in the queue. Commissioner Kemp, are you, no? And Commissioner White?
And I know the answer to this question, I just want to get it on the record. That means that the Kemp item that's coded with the letter A as in apple is no longer applicable.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Right.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, oh, Commissioner Hagan-Botham?
As a matter of being consistent, I'm going to remove my second on the flags. I know there were several others who would second it, so we needed a second on that.
Commissioner Kemp, you seconded, right? Commissioner Miller seconded. Okay, thank you. And seeing no further discussion, please record your vote on the flag list.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we are now, I believe, at the point where it's appropriate to have Tom Fessler read the required information into the record.
Commissioners, prior to approving the millage resolution, we need to read into the record certain information. The taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.3909 mils. The proposed aggregate millage rate of 8.9094 mils represents a 6.18% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. The millage rates to be adopted for tax year 2018 are countywide general revenue 5.7309 mils on incorporated area municipal services taxing district, 4.3745 mils, library services 0.5583 mils, voted general obligation debt environmentally sensitive lands 0.0604 mils, and voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation 0.0259 mils.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. I need a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Hagan to approve the millage resolution. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I would now entertain, I would now entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. Is that a duplicate? That's necessary, right?
Commissioners, the first resolution you adopted is a millage resolution, the second will be the budget resolution.
And this is the budget. Okay, so I need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And that will conclude our public hearing. We will now reopen the CIP public hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to take public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program prior to the board adoption. The Director of Management and Budget will present an overview of the proposed capital improvement program.
Yes, Commissioners, the capital improvement program is a five-year program from fiscal year 19 through fiscal year 23 and totals 1.548 billion. While the program remains constrained by current economic and revenue conditions, additional CIP funding in fiscal year 19 includes such things as 101 million in new funding for road resurfacing, intersection improvements, bridges, sidewalks, and other roadway improvements, 81 million to harden certain maintenance facilities, 49 million for the Water Enterprise Fund, 23 million for stormwater improvements, 20 million for emergency generators, 15 million for solid waste system improvements, 9 million for the Brandon and Riverview Library replacements, 7 million for the county facilities maintenance program or our R3M program, 4.2 million for fire equipment replacement and station improvements, 3.5 million for phase two of the Currowood Village Park, 3 million for solar systems at various libraries, 2.5 million for county center air handler replacements, and 2.275 million for the capital asset preservation program. And at this point, it would be appropriate to take public comment.
That's correct. We will now open the public hearing on the CIP program overview. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? I do not have a list of speakers. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the CIP program? Speak in favor. Anyone speak against? Okay, it's appropriate to close that public hearing. I would now entertain a motion to adopt the capital improvement program resolution as presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. And we do have a motion by Commissioner Crist, and it was seconded by everyone else, Hagan and White and Miller. Is there any discussion on the CIP program? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill, Ms. Wise, does that conclude our business for the evening?
We are concluded.
Okay.
Okay.
Seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Great budget, thank you all.